We will call to order the January 13th, 2022 Danby Select Board Meeting. Please rise and join me in the pitch to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. White.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Powers. Bender present. Okay, we have a quorum, we have three select board members present. I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda. We have a few additions to the agenda and one change. I'd like to add discussion of the Select Board Letter for the Town Report underneath the Discussion for Right Track request. I would like to change the motion to mail absentee ballots to read motion to mail absentee ballots to all registered voters. And under New Business, I would like to add the motion reappoint Ann Davis as Health Officer. Are there any other changes or additions? So I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we set as just read.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Select Board Meeting minutes of December 9th and December 16th, 2001.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of adopting, is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor of adopting the minutes of December 9th and December 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried. The record will reflect that Select Board Member Haynes is now with us at 7:05 PM. Planning Commission Report, Shelley.
Hello. The Planning Commission met last Thursday, and we, the first time, and we basically just set our meeting for the next quarter, which will be April 6th at 6:00 here at the, here at the town offices.
At April 6th, you said?
April 6th, the first Thursday.
At 6:00, you said?
At 6:00.
So it's actually the 7th.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 7th.
6:00 at 7:00.
Whatever the Thursday is.
The 7th at 6:00.
Oh, 7:00 at 6:00.
It's the first Thursday, yeah. I didn't set out to confuse, but it looks like I'm doing a good job. And, you know, the discussion was very basic, there's nothing new in town. I brought the Planning Commission up to date about the Hazard Mitigation Committee I'm on and the Emergency, Rutland Regional Emergency Committee that I'm now part of. And that was pretty much the meeting. Rutland Regional did not meet in December, so nothing for that. We did meet, we did meet for the Hazard Mitigation, I believe, right, I guess we did that last month. We did not meet in December for the Hazard Mitigation. But for the Rutland County Emergency Committee, we did meet, we had our first kickoff meeting, and unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum because 28 people are required for that, and we had 27. But there's a workaround to that with proxy letters, I guess, giving your counterpart the proxy if you're not, if you're not there. So that'll be taken care of for next meeting. They also meet quarterly. So my next meeting with them will be in probably March. And that's pretty much the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Our report.
Any questions for Shelley? Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
The water quality presentation by Barbara Neuss-Polling will be postponed until February, she has an illness in the family. So we will move on to the Road Commissioners' Report.
Um, we've had a lot of icy roads, and, you know, we're dealing with that good. We're on a budget using our salt and our sand, so we're fine at that point for where we're at in the year. We have had a few breakdowns with trucks, but nothing unheard of, and that's about it. They started cutting some brush, I believe we started on Danby Hill last week. They, they got a day in up there, and they've been cutting a little firewood for our new wood boiler. And I think that's about it for this month.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
There's some horrendous potholes, a couple really big ones over on Little Village Road, and one of them was, had an ice ball.
Yeah, it's a spring boiling up out of there.
Yeah, and it froze solid during that sub-zero snap we got a couple days ago.
Yeah, no, we were discussing where that water was coming from because it looked like an artesian well.
Which, which road is this?
Little Village, well, it's on the Green Hill end of it, just as you head up in. And all I can think of is that spring somehow got diverted from the pasture, because I know there were springs on the pasture, on the upper side of the road, because it's never been there before, all of a sudden it's there. But man, if you hit that in the dark or if there's some snow covering it up, it rattles things.
I wonder if we shouldn't put a, just a caution sign up there?
It doesn't hurt. I mean, I drive there every day, so I remember it's there, but somebody who comes up, you know, has a summer home or whatever, who's only there once in a while.
Now, was it boiling today, or is it finest?
I haven't been home, it, it looked like it was relatively dry this morning, and there's another good one down by Howser's, but the one up by Sullivan's.
Yeah, when that started, it, it really ran, but hopefully it dies down and we can put a little something over it when it, yeah.
So I would suggest two signs, one for By Howser's and one for up by Sullivan's.
And it'll have your name on it. Shelley, slow down.
Yeah, well, you know, I have a big enough vehicle, so I can kind of, you know, go over them without hitting them as hard, but somebody in a little car might be hurt.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We have a request by Right Track to put an advisory article on the Town Meeting Ballot. Have you seen the information?
I haven't on Right Track.
Okay, so they sent us a letter, as you have probably read recently in the local press, "The Right Track Foundation has proposed the construction of a regional field house at the Dana Thompson Recreation Park in Manchester. The idea is to build something large enough to serve the region, and the resulting facility would be available to people from the mountain-slash-valley area who would have access to a facility that no town could build on its own. To date, Right Track has borne all of the soft costs associated with the project and will do so through the entirety of the project. Additionally, Right Track has pledged $3 million toward the $13,250,000 estimated cost of construction and fit-up. Manchester will donate the cost of the land, provide connection to the septic system, and cover the cost of improvements to the driveway and adding more parking capacity. Additionally, Manchester voters will be asked to support a $3 million bond toward the construction. The remaining $7,250,000 would come from a combination of area towns contributing to the cost of construction, according to a formula based on grant list, population, and per-mile discount from the town center to the center of each town. Business contributions and private philanthropy. We are writing specifically to request that your Select Board place an advisory article on this year's Town Meeting Warning, asking simply whether residents of your town would like the Select Board to pursue involvement in the project. You would then appoint a Select Board Member to be involved in the development of an inter-municipal agreement, followed by a bond vote later in the summer of 2021. The warning language might look like this. Quote, "Shall the voters indicate support for the concept of a regional field house at the Dana Thompson Recreation Park in Manchester, with the understanding that towns would participate in its construction costs under a formula based on a combination of grant list, population, and distance in exchange for a specific use status for those who live or own a second home in the town of Danby. This article is advisory in nature and does not bind the town to further action." And they have enclosed a site plan, if anybody would care to look at that. And so the question is, do we want to put this advisory article on our warning?
Well, I don't see where it would hurt us to pursue it farther. I mean, we're, we're not obligated at any point.
Correct.
On that.
Strictly advisory.
And, you know, we, we could later on find out it's not a good deal, or it's going to really be a great community thing, so I, I'll make a motion that we add that to our warning.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion is made by Fuller, seconded by Haynes. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I don't know if they'll have the answer, because they haven't stated, like, if we choose not to participate down the line, that Danby Town residents not be able to utilize it, or?
It doesn't say, but I get that sense.
Or, like, it would be a higher fee to?
Well, I think the thing is, is, and my little note here was, there's a lot of unknowns in their letter there.
Yeah.
And I, what they're asking us for really isn't anything other than putting it on a ballot to get, like, a general polling. And from there, I mean, I, I would be interested to see where, where it goes, and I mean, whoever, whoever the board member is that's appointed towards that, I'm sure we would have a lot of questions for as this goes forward before we make any commitments.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen some of the Manchester discussion about it, and the biggest things, there's still a lot of, a lot of questions.
Right, and, and that's the thing is, it's, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything to at least go down the path right now. And before we spend any money, there would be a lot of these answers, yeah.
Yeah, we would get more information.
Yeah, which community involved me, even though, you know, it would be a board member probably attending, would be the largest part of getting, getting to what the town thinks.
Okay, all those in favor of placing this advisory article on the Town Meeting Warning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried. Okay, I've given you copies of a draft of the Select Board Letter for the Town Report. Comments on that?
Well, do you want to, is that on the ATB ordinance and all that?
This is the Select Board Letter we're talking about, Doug.
Oh, okay.
Not the warning yet.
Oh, okay, I couldn't hear too much of it, I just wondered what part it was. Okay, go ahead.
Did, did you get, did you read your email of the draft of the letter?
Any, any comments on it?
On the draft?
On, on the Select Board Letter.
On which one?
On, on the one that's actually labeled Select Board Letter, Doug.
Oh, okay.
It recaps what we did this past year.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Okay, so we'll give that to the clerk for the Town Report. Okay, next we move on to our budget.
Doug, did you get a copy of the latest proposed?
Yes, I did.
Um, the only changes I made since Jen printed it today was, I think we can take $15,000 off our equipment maintenance, because it was at 45, and I think we can do it at 35. Actually, well, in the proposed original, last month, we put in 50, but, just as we were kind of spitballing it, but after looking at things, I think, I think we can lower that to 35. So other than the proposed budget that's general there, that would take 15 off the highway end.
Okay, sounds good.
So that's on the bottom of page six, under Equipment. So we're going to change the 50 to 35, if everybody agrees.
Right.
Do you agree with that, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, and Doug, you said you agree with it?
Yeah, I agree with it.
Okay.
So in our, our salaries and benefits, and obviously we have to, you know, just anticipate the overtime number and salaries, we'd put in for the hiring of a third full-time guy, even though it's not, hasn't come to fruition, we put it in as the foreman number. Our salaries and benefits sum is the largest increase in our highway budget this year. It's up from 280 to 299. We raised salt by $5,000, just to offset the number of, which salt is going up, that's a 10% increase, and salt actually went up a little over 10%, and this is next year's budget, so. But our total budget is, with general and highways, $5,000 increase total.
Okay.
Okay, so for some reason, the change was not made on Listers. I believe we had cut that from 15,000 to 10,000, am I not correct?
Um, but the problem is, is there was, the Listers actually have a bunch more other stuff that Jen said.
Well, they wrote a letter.
Okay.
But when I'm looking at this copy, it doesn't reflect our change, so I'm not sure if they want.
What does their letter say?
Their letter says, "To the Select Board, the reappraisal is coming to an end. 2023 is going to be a busier year for the Listers. We are requesting an increase in our budget due to more grievances and the time mailing out reappraisal notices. We are asking for an additional $5,000 in the budget." So my question is, since this sheet does not reflect the proposed cut that we made, do they now want $20,000?
Yeah, there's no Listers here.
And I mean, historically, they've never gone over $9,000, so I certainly can't see raising it over 15.
Um, no, I agree with you that, that's, and I guess the only other thing that we didn't discuss is, and we hadn't had it, and I guess Ken, same thing, they've got an illness. So he didn't show up, and I'm talking Ken Abbott for the Fire Department, and they're asking for that 25,000, even though the truck is paid for, which the Town Agreement.
What page are you on, under the appropriations?
Yeah, under, it's, whatever, page four.
Page four.
And my only question is, I really, I mean, they had had in there that they wanted to use some of that for our communication tower over on the west side, and I think the town should head that, because we do have more federal money available to us than the Fire Department, and if they were going to use some of that, we could take that and use it towards the tower.
Okay, so they have two things, they have the fire truck agreement, which is the $25,000, then they're asking for an appropriation of $34,109, a little farther down the page, under appropriations.
Right, but the truck agreement is done.
Yeah, so.
So you're talking about that at the moment?
Yes, I'm saying that the truck agreement, the truck's paid for. So in lieu of that, and I didn't have a discussion with Ken, and I definitely don't, okay, I'm, go ahead.
So I, I help Ken with this technology, and I certainly can't speak for, but what I gathered with this was that the truck is paid for now. However, we have one tanker up to the second firehouse, that's a 1967?
Right.
That will be in the near future, needing to be replaced, or, I don't know. So there's more to it, the communications, the truck, their equipment, so to dress a fireperson in full gear right now is close to like $8,000. And they have to continue to keep things up to date, obviously for safety. So he was thinking, again, I'm not speaking for him, but that if they had a fund that was, if we just continued with the 25 we've been doing, they could have the ability to say, okay, we need this new gear, we can get it, as opposed to, well, now we have to wait till next year to get it. Does this make sense?
Now, the 34,000, oops, go ahead, clerk.
Well, I was just going to say that why don't you just change that 25,000 appropriation rather than agreement to repair and maintenance? I mean, you don't have an agreement as such.
Right.
Right.
I don't know about that part, that was all Fire Department. I wasn't anywhere near that part, I just sat with Ken at the computer and typed for him, and I asked him questions while typing to make sure I understand what we're trying to convey. So I don't know why.
And that's, when he spoke with me earlier, that's what he mentioned regarding the $25,000, why they wanted to keep that. So maybe we should retitle it. In fact, I think we should retitle it, because fire truck agreement is clearly not what it's going for.
Right.
It would be more of a equipment reserve for them at this point, is what it sounds like.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm trying to get clarity between the three categories we got going there.
Well, there's that, and then when you jump down into the appropriations, there's that odd kind of number, $34,109, and that is an odd number, because it's really $40,000, but it's an 80% Danby, 20% Mount Tabor.
Now, does that, is that number in the, part of the insurance for the Fire Department?
I thought that was further insurance.
Or do we have another line on insurance for them?
We cover, we're the umbrella for them, but it's billed directly to them.
Okay, so, so the 34,000, even though it's, it's 40 that we?
It's in there perhaps, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not insurance.
No.
So it seems that would be where gear?
I don't know.
So, no, they have to pay their insurance, even though we're their umbrella.
Right, but that's a whole, she's saying.
No, I guess I wish one of them could answer these for us. I mean, we could, are we gonna adopt their, set this tonight, or are we gonna?
I would hope to. I mean, he's basically asking us to keep the numbers the same, the $25,000 in.
Well, my, my only thing I'm trying to figure out is if we, if they go buy another truck, we would be more than willing to do the agreement again. But now we've got three agreements going, we got the 34, the 25, and now another one, that I, I want to try to get some sort of focus, and especially like on the communication end.
I would think we'd be able to pull money out of the ARPA funds for that.
And, see, we've got a lot of federal money there that we can use, and I, it's funny that this came up from Ken, but I had spoken about it after the rescue squad incident in the town truck, that there was no communication over there, and I said, we have to get some sort of tower set up over there. So, I mean, I, I think the Towns as much wants to go in that direction, so I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with, with the money, but I want to make sure we kind of know what direction we're, we're going with it.
Well, and of course, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it all needs to be spent.
Right.
So I would be in favor of relabeling that to Fire Truck Reserve.
I would like them to tell us what they want to leave for that.
Just come, come up with, you got bunker gear, you have a truck, you have communication, put a budget together, present it to them.
Well, that's what he was planning to do tonight, but unfortunately, they had a family emergency.
Well, the fire truck's paid for, I think we have to use that money towards that tower.
Yeah, but should we use our ARPA money for that, Doug, and then them not worry about the communication end of it? See, I, I know it's getting a little convoluted here with the, I, I want them to participate in that, but I want the Town to lead on that, because we can use our ARPA money, or maybe some other, and they, they can use their money towards something else, but I, I'm just wanted to know what their plans are, or if they don't need it, if we're gonna do the tower end of it for them, is, is my. So what do you guys want to do? I mean, we can, we can go with the number and then ask them to give us a, a better.
Yeah, and since the agreement has completed itself, I don't want to see the word agreement in there.
Right, because the agreement, we actually was guaranteeing it.
Right.
So we.
So I'd rather say reserve, fund.
And do we need a separate column for it if it's just going on the other thing? The agreement's gonna get scratched, and then we just put it on to their, with their other money.
Well, this part where it is now is guaranteed by the Town, the appropriations are voted one by one.
Okay, you're true.
So it could get next, and then we really have an issue there.
Michelle?
Yes.
Did you do that work?
So are we good with calling that Fire Truck Reserve?
Yeah, I think we'll have to call it something other than our Fire Truck Agreement, because that's already gone.
Would you make that, I could try?
Or Equipment Reserve?
Could I interrupt for just a minute?
Yeah.
You know, we always have this letter from the Fire Department.
Right.
And so I'm assuming that we'll be getting the same thing?
We will.
In the Town Report?
Right.
That would clarify it? I can get Tom Johnston on the phone if you'd like him, he's available for you.
If you, if you could, yeah. Hi, Tom.
So, Tom, we have a question. The fire department is represented in two different areas in our budget. And the first area was the $25,000 for the fire truck agreement, which has now been satisfied. And in a conversation earlier with Chief Abbott, he said he wanted to keep that $25,000 that's guaranteed by the town if our budget passes, but use it for other purposes such as redoing a communications, or installing a communications tower, and either updating or replacing the truck that's housed up at Danby Four Quarters. So we are considering changing the title of that account to Fire Equipment Reserve Fund. We're considering changing that since there is no longer an agreement. It's been satisfied. We're considering changing that to Fire Equipment Reserve Fund. Okay, so you're good with that? Then on the $34,109, which I understand is an 80% Danby, 20% Mount Tabor agreement, could you tell us what that money goes for? Operating expenses. So would gear, like when you need new gear for a firefighter, would that come out of there?
It would, yeah.
Okay. Do you gentlemen have any other questions?
No, I think as long as we know what we're doing with that 25, that it's not going towards truck payment. I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm good with it. I guess the only thing, I wanted to make sure that we were in the same page with the fire department, is that we're interested in that same project, and we would like to be the ones to, to do it.
Right, the communication tower sounds like something that can, we can use the ARPA funds for.
What, what type of question?
No, it's, it's a comment. So you would, you would have more of that $25,000 to either work on the truck, or put it toward a down payment on a new truck.
The letter that came together, let us know to show that there was some capital expenditure that are coming up here in the near future, that we really need to help with. It goes through the ARPA, funding it, funding it, so we touch, have a few of those.
Right.
Yeah, and, and we're more than happy to help, Tom. I mean, that, you know, the town, and we just wanted to make sure that we labeled it accurately, as we said, because anyone looking at it's gonna say the fire truck agreement expired, and why are we still paying on it? So we're just trying to make sure we're accurately putting in what that $25,000 is for.
Okay, so I, I thank you for your time, Tom.
All right.
Yeah, good night. So we'll keep that the same as it is, and just relabel that to Fire Equipment Reserve Fund. And so we've cut $15,000 from the proposed budget. And I would like to look at the law enforcement account under traffic control, where we increased it from $10,000 to $15,500. I'd like to put that back to $10,000. So with the other 15 that we cut, we're now up to a $20,000 cut, which is a penny on the tax rate.
Instead of 40, you want to end up at what?
Instead of 40?
Yeah, because right now our total law enforcement is 40.
Right. So I want, I'm suggesting that it be 34. Now, that's not right either.
35. If you took off to $10,000, be 35.
Yeah.
No, right now, our proposed budget is $24,500, and I'm not sure why they had the separate incident or number is 50, but basically, our, our proposed budget was $40,000, and you want to cut 10.
I want to cut five.
So basically, flat, go with the same budget that we did, and we didn't use.
Right.
And I guess, I guess that's one thing that we got to be clear with everybody. We're actually still increasing the law enforcement budget because.
The contract.
The contract, we, there was extra in last year's budget that never was actually put into the contract. I think I said that correctly. So we're gonna be able to increase the contract this year and still flatline the budget from last year's. So it's, it's not a cut or a thing, but it is an increase still in, in the hours of patrol. So we'll go back to 35 on that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the only bad part is with this ATV ordinance, if it does pass, we're gonna have to have the sheriff here seven days a week.
I, I mean, the thing is, Doug, the, I mean, that's, that's kind of a, just a poll of the people. And I mean, we haven't even gotten to that part yet, so why don't we?
No, I know it, I know it, but I mean, I don't want to cut back on the sheriff.
Yeah, and we're not cutting back.
We're not cutting back on the sheriff.
Okay, because I thought it was up to $40,000 on it.
Well, we, we went to.
Thirty-five.
We were, we were at 35 from last year, but the thing is, we only did the contract with the sheriff for 20 of it, so, or actually 24.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four of it. So when we increased, we had $10,000 extra that was put into a separate column, so we actually can still increase by $10,000 with the sheriff's department and not increase the sheriff's budget, or at least our, what we put in for the sheriff's budget.
Okay, sorry.
Hopefully, I'm saying that correctly.
Okay, so I'll make that 35. Any other suggestions?
So I guess with that being said, I think we're an even with no increase.
Right. So we had a question submitted in writing from Lynn Bondurant, wondering how much the tax rate will increase if the town passes the proposed budget. And of course, we can't say what the tax rate will be because that can't be determined until after the grand list is done. But as far as the budget is concerned, it's flat.
It's a, it's a flat-lined budget, so there's, so in theory, the town, and this is just, the grand list should go up this year. I mean, there was more houses added, so with an increased grand list, in a flat-lined budget, taxes should go down. Without a grand list, though, I can't guarantee that.
Okay, so are we good to have a motion to?
I make a motion, we present the budget, our proposed fiscal year '23 budget that we're all looking at with the changes that were made, which there was only the two. And I guess then there was the, the grammar change, or whatever, on the fire department, so that it, that we present that to the townspeople as a budget to vote on.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the budget, the proposed budget?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. So next, I will entertain a motion to mail absentee ballots to all registered voters.
I'll make a motion.
I'll check it.
Any discussion?
What's wrong with the way we used to do where we had to request an absentee ballot?
Well, the only thing that, and this is my opinion on it, is your average working person sometimes forgets Tuesday is election day because it's not a holiday, and you go to work, and you work all day, and you get home, and you say, oh, jeez, I forgot to go vote. If we mail them out, we, you have it in front of you on Sundays, and you can sit around and talk about it and everything, and you have no reason not to fill it out, and then the only thing you have to do is be able to show up and drop it off or mail it in. And I, I, my feelings is, we get a lot better turnout of the town in general on, on, on that. That's my thoughts. I don't know if any of the other board members want to.
I feel, I'm what you want to add.
Well, in my opinion, if you are, I realize jobs get in the way and such, and we have one voting hours, we're seven, seven. You have 12 hours to get here. And I do understand that sometimes you can't, some people work 12 hours a day. However, if you'd like to vote, I don't think it's that difficult to pick up the phone and it's all Janice, and ask for one to be sent home. I'm not, my opinion is that I'm just not fond of everybody feeling you need to do everything from home, including voting. That's not how, and we don't have, our line isn't like out the door, we don't stand outside for an hour. I don't, I disagree, and I don't believe I'm giving them a chance.
I guess my question is, what was the percentage of increase, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
You are putting me on the spot because I can't answer that truthfully, but it was a big increase. It was phenomenal.
So what I'm saying is, I would rather see everybody vote who's a registered voter, and if we have to ice them more with mailing it to them, I, I think that's a good thing because 150 voters isn't really a good representation of a, of a town. So, so if, if we, if we go that extra step, and I guess my, my thoughts would be fluid on the change. If, if, if we end up with 150 after mailing them out this time, I would say that our technique isn't working, but I, I would like to see as many voters as, as we can get that are registered, and, and that seems to, in, in, in that instance, you know, it, it was kind of brought on because of COVID, but then it ended up giving a result of, wow, you know, there was a substantial increase, and.
That's a question. So would the polls still be open?
Oh, yeah, no, it would still be, it would still be the same thing.
So everybody gets a ballot mailed to them. At town expense, this is not covered by the state like it was last year. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Janice, but you bring that ballot to the polling place if you wish to vote in person.
So for me.
Or you drop it off beforehand, mail it back in, or drop it off at the town clerk's.
And if you don't bring it, don't bring that ballot back that was mailed to you, you have to sign an affidavit saying that you have lost in this place.
Okay.
Well, it'd be good last time. I think we had a sign on last year.
If you didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you can, so it gives you the second way.
Yeah. So without sounding like a pot stirrer, I clean a house in Dorset that is a second home. And it's a second home to foreigners at that. And last year, on their kitchen table as I was cleaning, were absentee ballots from the town of Dorset to his and her name.
So you're saying the town of Dorset doesn't do a good job of checking their, and, and they could be on the voter's checklist there. It doesn't matter if it's their second home.
They're often natural.
Wouldn't you ever take a chance to speak?
Oh, go ahead, Doug.
I think it's a good idea to mail all these absentee ballots, because with COVID out here, and so many people are getting it now, now, a lot of people won't go in and vote at the, at the town clerk's office because of that, and he's at, and this way, everybody gets a chance. And taxpayers pay a lot of money, they should add this, just mail to them, have it done.
I think your point is that if you care that much, then maybe I would make a phone call.
Janice? I'm just, on the remark that Michelle made, we have people here in town whose husband votes in Danby, the wife votes in another part of, you know, another state.
In another place, okay. Where do you claim?
Certainly with Florida, you know, they get the $10,000.
Well, yeah, as if they, yes. I was just, I, it struck me, it just struck me as, so, I have questions.
So my other question on that, and is, it would have been more relevant 10 minutes ago, how much extra expense is it going to be that we should be budgeting for?
It's in the postage.
It's in the postage, okay.
Yep, no, we thought of that.
Okay.
Yep. Because the ballot print, we got to print anyway, so that cost didn't change. But we put it in the postage? Yeah, we put it in the postage. Yep.
One follow-up question. So if moving forwards, you do find that mailing them back in or sending them back in is a four turnoff, would you then reverse this to save on some postage?
Next year, I'll answer that.
I'll, I'll ask you next year. I will ask you.
Don't forget, we have three, three elections this year.
Okay, so that's postage times three.
Yeah, right.
Now, the state's paying for?
Yes.
The second one.
Okay.
Because that is a national, or state, whatever you want to call it, it's, so, yeah, so it's, it's postage.
The second and third, right? Yeah, so we're only paying.
Yeah, we're only paying for the.
Town meeting.
Yeah.
The only thing that is, all three are the people that sit here to catch COVID.
Yes, yes, the people who come in and work and do their job every day.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, that, that should lessen the number that actually show up, because if you've had it on a Sunday and you filled it out and dropped it off or mailed it, it, it'll make the polls a lot more fluid and a lot less people at the same time.
You have several weeks to get it in here. So that kind of goes along with two other questions that Lynn Bondurant has submitted. And one of those is, can you? can you tell me what percentage of our grand list is second homeowners who pay taxes but are not registered voters? And I cannot because I don't have a grand list in front of me or access to that computer where I would hope they could separate the R1s and 2s from the V1s and 2s and give that number. So Lynn, you would have to ask the listers that question. And the second part of that is, what are you going to do to get the second homeowner's thoughts on the ATV ordinance advisory question? And again, it's, if you're registered to vote here, you have a say. If you don't, you don't. I mean, you have the option to register to vote where you wish. And as Janice said, in some cases, one member of the family votes here and one votes in other places. I can't really help with that. Any other comments on that? Okay, so let's call the question about mailing absentee ballots to all registered voters.
I'll make the motion.
You did make it, and it was seconded by Doug. So now we're, now we're getting the vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so then we will move on to the warning. So now we have included in the warning the issue of the Right Track Field House. Where are you putting that? Since that is a non-binding question, I would put that as?
Article 12?
11?
11?
We have nine and 10 already, there's not a red flag advisory, non-binding.
Right. So I would put that as Article 11. I'd put all the non bindings together.
Right track. Are you going to go down each item one by one, or are you?
Yeah, let me just get, so that we've got so many graphs of this floating around. So Article 11 then will be the Field House. Okay, so the warning says, "The legal voters of the town of Dambie are hereby warned and notified to meet at Courier Memorial School, 234 North Main Street, Dambie, Vermont on Monday, February 28, 2022, at 7:30 PM to transact the following business. Article 1, shall the voters accept the town report. Article 2, shall the voters authorize the collection of taxes on or before November 16, 2022. Article 3, shall the voters authorize the selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of funds not to exceed the previous year's budget. Article 4, to discuss the town budget, to be voted on by Australian ballot, March 1, 2022, at the Dambie Municipal Building. Article 5, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting." And then the meeting is?
I guess I, I don't want to cut you off too quick, but we're having it at the school or the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the Dambie Municipal Building, that's called?
No.
Okay.
It says, "Shall they meet at Courier Memorial, they are warned to meet at the Courier Memorial School."
Okay, I'm sorry.
And Article 4 is to discuss these other articles, which would be now 6 through 11, I believe, or 12 with the appropriations, which will be voted at the municipal building the next day. So after Article 5, the floor meeting is recessed until the following day. And the following are voted by Australian ballot on March 1, 2022, at the Dambie Municipal Building, 130 Brook Road, Dambie. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Article 6 is to elect all town officers by Australian ballot for the ensuing year. Article 7 is, shall the town vote a budget of, and we have to put the number in there that we decided upon tonight. And I hesitate to do that at the moment.
Yeah, no, it's easier just to do it on Janice.
To be raised by taxes to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town for the fiscal year July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, and authorize the selectmen to set a tax rate sufficient to provide for the same. Article 8, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to appoint a collector of delinquent taxes pursuant to 17 VSA subsection 1674. Article 9, advisory, non-binding article. Should the Select Board adopt an ordinance regulating the operation of all-terrain vehicles and opening certain town highways to ATV travel pursuant to 23 VSA subsection 3506B1A. Article 10, to see if the voters will vote to fund from tax revenues the following options. Somehow there, we skipped?
You know, you should have had Article 10, which was advisory, non-binding, shall the town provide hybrid access?
Yeah, where did that?
It's Article 10 on mine.
I think you have too many graphs.
I have way too many, you flooded me with?
Article 10 is, you were right, right up till Article 10, which is? Here, read mine.
Article 10, advisory, non-binding article. Shall the town of Dambie provide hybrid access in person and remote to all public Select Board meetings, regular, special, and otherwise, excepting legally sanctioned executive sessions? Then Article 11 becomes the Field House.
Yes.
And Article 12 becomes the appropriations.
Oh, I got it down to Article 10, this bird, I got.
Yeah, 11 is the new one that we just added, Doug. It was added tonight. It's that, um, non-binding, if we want to participate with Manchester and the other towns on the Field House. And it's, it's just a, I don't know, it's not a binding thing.
Okay. You know, do we discuss any of these articles now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got, it's yours now, go ahead.
Okay, what I'd like to know is, on this, uh, delinquent tax, does that, so, do we find somebody through that? We could, now, we're going to have to pay them a salary, right? Whoever you appoint. And if they're going to be a full-time employee, then they're going to be on a union. So that's going to cost us a lot more than what the, than doing it the other way, Linda.
I don't see why they'd be a full-time employee.
Now, how?
So if I'm, you pay somebody for a full year of paying, that's not going to offset what you're going to be making of that 7% or 8%?
Now, what did you estimate the hours a year on it?
I didn't estimate the hours a year. I estimated a flat salary of between $2,000 and $5,000, which is all that the surrounding towns pay their delinquent tax collectors. Because the delinquent tax collector is already using town postage, town machines, and yet they get a salary that's close to $20,000.
Okay, now, another question is, what, how, how is it going to really save us any money if we're going to have to pay somebody full-time? And then if they have to go into union, and we have to give them insurance money? It really don't make much sense to me, but I don't know. Must be in, just don't get with it.
I don't see where you're getting full-time from, Doug.
Well, with the, the way it is right now, the only money they make is what they collect on delinquent tax, right? The 8%?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so if they only collect two, three people, and we don't even have the budget for a full-time person to do delinquent taxes. We'd have to trigger that into our budget, right?
Right.
So we, right now, we ain't got that in our budget, so we can't do nothing for a whole year with that. Do we do another budget? Right or wrong?
So you're saying you're going to pay delinquent tax collectors $2,000 to $5,000 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, will it be a net savings or loss?
It would be a net savings of somewhere around $15,000.
Michelle has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who best served in doing this?
Delinquent tax collector? Doug White?
It's an elected position right now, and basically?
And nobody has put in a petition, or filed a petition for it yet, am I correct?
That's correct.
And in the past, they're paid based on what they collected?
Mm-hmm.
Is it state law dictates 8%? Is that how that came up with the 8%?
Yes, but, you know, it, every town does it quite easily.
It can go either way.
So then it would just be changing and repaying the, uh, rate of?
Mm-hmm.
I guess, yeah, I've never looked into the, what the average delinquent tax is are in the town, so I'm not even going to speak on it. I guess before I cast my vote, I'll want to know all this stuff, too.
Right, because I mean, some people are just a year behind, and some people are like, five years behind.
Exactly.
And based on, you know, you have like five bakers and you're, I don't know, 2,500. So what does this, to make sure everybody's on the same page, what exactly does this person do?
They send out notices every month.
Okay, so they do it, they don't have any phone calls, or?
I'm sure some of them, I'm sure, and I have never asked?
I mean, it's their discretion as to whether or not?
Some people, it's as simple as they, they just kind of screwed up and missed it. And other people are, you know, obviously don't have the money at the time. You know, I know, um, they used to do some workout plans with them and, and stuff like that, but?
They send out a bill that looks like that.
And Doug doesn't want to do it anymore?
I don't know. He has not filed a petition. But what I'm suggesting is that? I didn't hear what that was.
He has silver 24.
Mm-hmm. What I'm suggesting is that our neighboring towns do it as a salary rather than an elected position. And it seems like it would come?
Well, you're not, it's going to be, if they're not going to be elected, how are they going to be chosen?
They'll be hired by the board, right?
Can you submit a letter of objection?
I think we should put that on hold for, to do a little more investigating.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should let the voters direct us.
Yeah, see, Doug, I guess, I guess, yeah.
It is a binding article.
Yeah, this, I guess the voters are going to be able to make that, that decision. You know, and, and everybody should, should do their homework on it if they feel the town is going to save or lose money on it.
Yeah.
They get, they get?
Well, I think towns will lose money when you hire somebody full-time and pay them insurance and all of their benefits and stuff. There's no goddamn clue that town's going to make out, I wouldn't think.
I don't see where you're getting the full-time and benefits. I mean, if you hire somebody, you post a job. It does not need to include benefits or anything else. Exactly, it's a part-time job, very part-time.
So what's, and the notice is just saying, is putting it up to the voters if we want to switch to that or continue as an elected position?
And the way it works now is it's a one-year elected position. Always has been.
So I'm thinking, um, how many taxes he has collected in the last few years, and how much money he's gained for the town?
Well, that's it. The town would be gaining more money.
He's collected a lot of back taxes for the town. And, but if somebody, you guys appoint somebody, they ain't so have to be pushing it so much as somebody that's doing it for the 8%. I wouldn't think, but I don't know. I might be all right, but I don't think so.
So if Doug or somebody else puts their name in for delinquent tax collector, and Doug gets voted in, and then the townspeople vote for us to appoint somebody, does Doug keep the position for this year, or?
No. I would think he would.
No. The way the law works, the, if there is a positive vote, that trumps?
Before, okay, because the term has expired, and before they, okay.
As a registered voter, I think it's fair to ask for a thing, yeah?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it may be more wholeheartedly, let's stay with the elected person, or it may, you know, that's the nice thing about trying to get everyone to vote.
Right, right.
Yep.
We'll have to wait and see.
Yep.
Okay, now, the next thing is on Article 9, which is ATV. Where are we going to lie? We don't have no trails if it, if those pass because Scarlet Drive's closed.
Well, I think I?
They closed their trails, so all we've got, Dambie Wells, for me, right on.
I think the thing to look at, Doug, is, this is non-binding. I think what this will give is everybody an idea of the discussion. I mean, there's nothing saying it goes anywhere. I mean, it, it's a non-binding, it's taken, you know, a poll of which way the wind's blowing. And it, it's going to help the board with some of the, you know, stuff there. That, I, I guess, I would like to hear what the people have to say. I mean, I've, I've got opinions against, you know, some of the areas being ridden because of the fact that, what they're going to do to the roads. But I guess I'd like to see what all the voters say, and that may help, help everybody with the decision on it. But it's, it's so far not even closed up for discussion with the board until we actually hear what the non-binding vote, you know, tells us. And then we should discuss it from there.
Yeah, because I know if it does pass, we're going to have to have a full-time sheriff.
Yeah, but you're, you're under, you're aware that it's a non-binding. So even if it comes back through?
I know, yeah, it's non-binding.
600, the board can still say, hey, we're, we're not in favor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think that was the question when, I'm sorry, so then? Like, when this was a hot topic of debate, it was brought up, how many people are actually interested in this? So if it's able to be openly discussed, then it will give the board and other fellow towns members the opportunity to really see, is it five people or is it 500 people?
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, that's a good point, Dre. What is the percentage of people that are in favor and not in favor of it? So, I mean, we may find out that it's, you know, 400 are against it and 200 are for it.
And put some numbers in, I think that was one of the biggest requests.
That's one thing about putting it down the ballot, so it's voted on.
Yeah, exactly.
When and where did you decide to put it on the ballot? I mean, there was no public meeting that I know about it. Who petitioned to put it on the ballot?
You don't have to petition to put it on the ballot. This is the public meeting, and we're discussing the warning.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to finalize this draft of the warning.
As, as read? Not as you got on here.
As read. I'm putting a star on this copy so that it doesn't get confused with these others that are gonna get thrown in the garbage. Okay, so did somebody move that?
Yes. I'll second it.
Steve and Tom? Any other discussion? All those in favor of finalizing the warning?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, is there any old business to come before the board? Okay, I don't hear any old business, so under new business...
Just got to hand it over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, this is new.
So you can go first.
Okay. We want, first of all, we have your permissions, Collette and I, to work with Maureen on the town report, because apparently the auditors, other than Maureen, haven't really come forth to do anything, and we have deadlines here. Do you have a problem with that?
You have my permission.
Yeah.
And, okay.
Do you need it as a board to...
No, I just, so that it's out there.
Is there a financial consideration here?
I haven't, I haven't heard of it.
Okay.
The other thing...
And I would like to be part of that process also.
We have in the past, at least last year, when we did the town report, or when the town report was done, all of, there were so many of these organizations to put letters in that just totally increased the printing and the cost of the town report. I would suggest, and Collette and I and Maureen have talked this over, that just the local organizations, the, you know, the fire department, ones that are right here in the area.
The town?
Yes.
Yeah, and what I suggested to you was that these other letters be archived on the town website, and there be a line in the town report saying, if you wish to see the reports of the organizations listed in the appropriations section, that you visit the town website.
Could we also make the hard copies available at the office, too?
And the hard copies are available at the office, obviously, because she has to scan them and send them in.
Just 'cause some people are tech savvy, or, you know, they like to physically have some of them...
And then there's so many people that don't ever read them.
Right.
Even when they are in the town report, so...
And then they're like, what, what, what is this?
So Janice, how many are you suggesting you're gonna leave on there, and how many...
I don't really count it though. We were going to kind of do that tomorrow. I wanted to find out before doing anything, talking with you gentlemen, see that you didn't have a problem.
So let's look at the appropriations page of the budget.
I guess, do you have any comment on what you're considering? I mean, I know you said the fire department. Is there any other on there that you're thinking?
The historical society, um...
Danby Mount Taber now.
It's like the RSVP and Rutland Hospice and the visiting nurse, a parent-child center, all of those, that, you know, they're county-wide, statewide, in fact, in some.
Right.
And we're very aware of what...
So what are you thinking? They're gonna have three or four?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's gonna save us about 300 pages.
No, it's gonna save...
Yeah, no, I, I, I was...
Yes, you know, you're being facetious.
I think you should also reach out to the library. I believe they had something in there.
Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I recall something about coming to visit the library and the pet readers.
Well, then there's the report of Danby community groups that I think should stay in here.
Right.
Because that way, there are numbers and names and so forth for people.
Exactly.
Like the Green Mountain Climbers and the community calendar and those types of things that you won't have letters on necessarily.
So it's more focused on specific to Danby?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I think it's a good idea, especially as long as they're available on the website or from the, you know, clerk, so it's not, and it'll save, yeah, quite a few pages.
I don't think we need a motion. We've...
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Good with that. I do need a motion. The state has requested that we now appoint the health officer for three years. And let me find the letter here. This is from the State Department of Health writing to you regarding the town health officer's term of office, which will expire on 2/28/2022. We would like to have a recommendation from the Select Board for a town health officer to serve for the next three years. The law provides that the Department of Health appoint a health officer upon recommendation of the Select Board. Thus, we urge you to give this matter your immediate attention. The Department of Health believes that you should recommend someone who is interested in responding to and resolving issues associated with rental housing, water septic mold, and other public health issues that often arise or are disputed between different parties. So, I contacted our health officer, Ann Davis, and she is willing to take on a three-year commitment, and she's done a fine job for a number of years now, so I would...
Make the motion that we appoint Ann Davis for three years.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Doug, did you vote in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion passes unanimously. Okay, any other new business? If there's no other new business, we'll open the meeting to public comment.
My same question. Why do you bring back virtual meetings? Do you know how many cases there were in Vermont just today?
It is on the ballot to come back.
It shouldn't have to be. You should be doing it now.
Thank you for your opinion. Any other public comment?
Well, I'll make the motion adjourned.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we are adjourned at 8:24.